Good morning, this is the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Wednesday, May 25th, 2022. It is 9:04 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in building 11280.
Good morning, this is the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Wednesday, May 25th, 2022. It is 9:04 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in building 11280.
Oh, it's a hybrid board work session. It is Wednesday, May 25th, 2022.
I apologize for getting a little bit of feedback. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Person County YouTube channel or join by calling 360-252-9020. PIN number 1234. The topic on today's agenda is the budget amendment, number one decision. Before we get started, so I do want to acknowledge the tragedy that happened yesterday afternoon. We were in our Board of County Commissioners meeting last night. So I would like to take a moment of silence for the 19 children and two adults who passed away last night. Thank you. With that, I will pass it on to Robin.
Yes, good morning, Commissioner Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. Today, we are going to look at two things. First is budget amendment number one. And as we discussed last week, I am asking you today to make decisions about budget amendment one. Once you've made the decisions, these are basically your final decisions, even though you're not voting to adopt today. Because we will then take the decisions that you've made, add up the dollar amounts, publish those in the newspaper once a week for two weeks, and then the board will take action. And it will either be an up or down vote at that time. If you want to make changes after today, then we need to, we're thinking that it'll probably be on your June 14th agenda. But if you want to make changes after today, we need to poll it and go through this process again due to a new strict reading of the budget laws. So first item on the agenda today, making decisions about the budget. That shouldn't take long at all, so yep, you've got a whole packet of stuff that we'll go through. And this will be our, we've got through it.
Are we starting with this first one?
Well, we, yep, we'll start with the one on top on the packet and go through. But before I get there, that's not going to take very long. We've got two hours today because the second part of today is to look at the forecast model and give you an opportunity to think about salaries. There's been a lot of talk about COLAs, how much are COLAs? You just approved the sheriff deputies' contract yesterday. So I have set up the model to be interactive. And we can see what impact we'll load into the forecast model, the agreement that we came to with the sheriff, the parts that have significant impact. And then we can do some what ifs and enter whatever percent of COLA you'd like to take a look at and other economic factors. So that'll be the bulk of today, and I think that'll be the more fun part, if not a little bit concerning to the dollar amounts.
But we will not be asking you to make any decisions at that time.
No decisions on this house.
It's just giving you the opportunity to see where we are in options. As you know, we're in the process of negotiating the rest of the contracts by the end of the year. It's just to give you a perspective of the capacity that we currently have and mainly in the general fund. So please don't feel pressured that we're going to be asking you to make any decisions at that point.
No decisions at all today, simply running some what-if scenarios.
Except we are going to make decisions.
You're going to make decisions about amendment one, and then we're going to just have a what-if discussion on salaries. All right, so we'll start with amendment one and. So I need to put some glasses on. All right, starting with the capital reappropriations. We give this one to you for information only because you appropriate your capital projects by project over the course of time. But we want you to see some projects are, and the money didn't get spent last year, so it's moving up. Some projects, the funding was in a future year, it's going sooner. So the capital reappropriations are just for your information. I'm gonna set them aside unless you have questions. Packet number two is grants, and you can tell the packet I'm on because the name is in the title.
So we're not going to go over these individually?
No, we did that a few weeks ago, but these are decisions that the board has already made for your information. Grants, as we went over on the review a few weeks ago, the bottom line in grants is that we're actually bringing in more revenue than we're spending in every fund that is impacted by grants. And so I am asking you to approve the grants in total. Yes?
I have a question in regards to grants and the money that has come in, which is great. I'm not opposed to that. But my question is, is there going to be like a request down in the future where someone needs to complete a project and so they need funds from us? Or has those, has that already been requested?
So in general, the deal with grants is if there's match, you absorb the match in your current budget. And if there's not enough grant money to complete, these are all operating grants, not capital projects. So the deal that we have with offices and departments is if you bring in grant money, they can spend the grant money, but there is no obligation on the county to put additional money going forward. And there is, unless they come back to you with a budget proposal. So you are not obligated.
Because with the District Court, number four, right? When we, we had to approve that one because it was kind of a last-minute kind of grant they got. And, but there was such a short time turnaround that there was still an impact to the general fund if they weren't able to complete it in time for that grant. So I'm just wondering if there's going to be any other situation like that that we should be aware of with these other grants?
So this one, we're actually not going to pay the difference out of general fund. We're going to use a trial court improvement fund.
Okay.
But I'm not aware that any of these other requests come with that type of.
But I think Commissioner Mahia was right on District Court and this particular grant. It was, it was coming from the state, but it was a time in which that ended that we can, whether the project was going to be able to be delivered in order for us to.
That's correct.
And I think the project will be delivered at that timely matter
It will.
in order for us to take advantage of the grant.
Right, and the board is not being asked to increase the appropriation in trial court improvement fund? The court has $50,000 that wasn't earmarked for anything in particular, and they're going to use part of it to complete this project.
Thank you.
Yep, good question. So grants, yes sir?
What is the difference here? I see the expenditure revenue and expenditure is relatively the same all the way through, except on line 11, it goes from $55,000 to $38,000.
Right, that is.
Why is that?
That is because they're going to bring the money in this year. They're asking to spend the part that gets a two-year grant. Excuse me, they are asking to spend the part that they'll spend this year for appropriation, and then they'll ask for the remaining in 2023. They intend to come back in the midterm process and ask for that. Why they did not put the balance in the second year, I do not know.
Okay, that's one you're right. Some, because some do.
Right, most do.
You know, like District Court.
Yep. Any other questions about grants? And I'm going to ask for thumbs up. One, two.
Thumbs up.
Yes, and we have really, we've, this is just an overview of an overview that we've already given, so.
Yep, we already went through all of this in detail. I can do that again if you'd like.
No, no, no.
All right, thumbs up on grants, one, two, three. All right, technical transfers. The vast majority of the technical transfers are the credit card rebates. That goes all through page one, two, and it's about page three. And then the rest of the technical transfers, net to zero, some moving between funds. But the vague technical adjustment that we're making is on page four, line 49, where we are reducing the expenditures for LFO because the state auditor has told us we do not need to account for those as a liability of the state. So we don't need appropriation authority for the LFOs. We are taking that out of our budget. We had assumed a very small amount of revenue connected to the LFOs because at the time we did the budget, the state had not committed to paying for them. So this is what creates a whole lot of capacity in the general fund at this time. Yes sir?
On the, as to the, where, I'm sorry, line 49, so we allocated $8 million, am I right when we started?
6.2 million.
And we spent how much?
I would have to look that up.
Well, let's just say four million is coming back. We spent 2.2.
Yeah, we didn't even spend that much so far.
No, we didn't start. I think the last number I had was less than half a million.
Okay.
And the LFOs, yeah.
Four, five, six, so 194. So the four million is coming in 2022 and 2.1 is coming in 2023?
No, it's not that that money is coming to us. This is how much the board appropriated for LFOs, and we can back out the entire amount.
Which included like state and general fund revenue. And I think that's the, the general fund is what is coming back to the end of fund balance.
Right.
And I'm wondering, the 500,000 then that we, do we get that back? Or do we, are we on the hook for that?
No, we are 100% reimbursed, yep.
So there's some amount that is coming back, the part that we've already made out.
Right, but according to the, this is where it's technical. According to the state auditor and financial services, because it is a liability of the state, we do not record it in the county records. We spend the cash and then we get the cash back. But we don't need appropriation authority, and it does not hit our fund balance. It's a, it's an accounting, and Darren and I went into it in depth before we made this change.
Okay, and I trust you guys on that, that at a policy level, what I need to know is that essentially not a single dollar of those LFO reimbursements are going to hit the county budget.
That's correct.
I mean.
Ultimately.
That is absolutely correct.
Ultimately. That, that is, that is the.
I wasn't sure how we were.
It's a state liability, and they have made the appropriation to.
I wasn't sure how we were dealing with the ones that had already gone out the door and all that.
We've been reimbursed for that, but even those are, the financial services is doing a journal entry to remove that from our records.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's, it's a very strange, in my opinion, to book it that way, but that is how I've been assured it needs to be done.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, yesterday, a citizen brought up on the lakes issue a transfer of funds out of their fund, apparently to the county's fund under Public Works. And I'm wondering if any of that that he talked about yesterday is reflected here? And it sounds like we maybe did not discuss it ahead of time, or if we did, I don't remember it. But I'm just trying to make sure that we don't make some move here that's going to be detrimental to that lakes fund, at least without some discussion on it.
So I heard the citizen's comments, and if you look at this list, there is no adjustment in the lakes management fund.
There's under, 24, a small amount. But right above that, he said something about how it had to do with public health, and I thought the dollar amount was 17,000. And that just kind of grabbed my eye as I was reviewing this, that, well, is that what he was referring to? Some, some change there that took place that I don't know about, and I don't know enough, so I'm asking.
So I don't know enough about what the citizen was saying happened, and I have not had an opportunity yet to connect with Public Works, however, or Public Health. But I can tell you exactly what line 23 is. Line 23 is a credit card rebate.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with any other transaction.
Okay, so just as a general statement, more than likely in this material we're going over, it's not going to have that questionable issue that that citizen brought up.
I don't think so, but as we go, we can quickly look down the list of funds and see if any of the funds are the lake management districts.
There's a couple with.
All right, so no lake management district fund in the technical. Any other questions about the technical adjustments?
No, I'm going to leave that quiet.
Again, at the bottom line, they pretty much net to zero except for the one huge adjustment to the general fund.
I do have a thumbs up on this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see how, if we're going to keep things going.
No, I.
We'll never get out of here, otherwise, either.
This is your opportunity to ask questions, and that's why we put two hours.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, if I want to know, we got to go to Public Works and see, they know something about this and all.
Right, that transaction is not in this package.
Okay, that's all I'm wondering. I want to have a discussion about it at some point, that's all.
Right, I, I agree, we need to look into what the person was saying.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so the next item in your package is a list that looks like this. This is the general fund fund balance adjustments. And again, it's a technical fix that we do every year after the fiscal year close. When we prepare the budget, every funded administrator does their best guess of what the fund balance is going to be. So like in August last year, my best guess at that time of the beginning fund balance, five months from then, would be $32,670,000. Once the year is closed, seven or eight months later, we find out what the fund balance really is. And the fund balance for the general fund, the beginning fund balance is actually $38,508,183. So we make this adjustment in the accounting system, and the board has to approve that. And you see that adjustment in every single fund.
Is that, is that $4 million in the lake? Is that in there somewhere too?
No.
It is not.
It is not part of this calculation.
So in, in reality, we got 42 million then as a fund balance?
No, well, you'll, you'll see when we look at the forecast, the fund balance does substantially go up when you add that money in. Yes, yes, it does.
But it doesn't show.
Not on this list.
On this one, okay. Now, I have another question about that, and that is that, like on the budget stabilization fund. Okay, we're, we're kind of maxed out on that now at 3 million, right? Isn't, wasn't that the original?
5 million is the cap.
Oh, 5 million is the cap?
Yep.
Okay, how do I, and I'm just trying to remember back, there was a reason I was opposed to doing that. So does that mean that I'm opposed to everything here? You're asking for a thumbs up? Are we doing it by line item or not? It's not that I'm so much against it, it was, I thought there were other priorities that maybe could have been utilized. Okay, so is it a technical issue? What's the deal here? I'm trying to do it right and be consistent with maybe my position, so that's my question.
I understand. But this is one single action, and it's completely technical. You could vote, you could all vote no today, and the fund balance would still be $3 million. It just is what it is.
And like I want the roads and transport, I want, I want the $20 million. I want roads fixed and all that. So I certainly don't want to vote against everything, and I do recognize the democratic process, so.
Right, so these members are, this is a factual statement. This is, this is an accounting.
It looks like an accounting nightmare to me, but.
Statement, and, well, it isn't, but you just need to approve the adjustment.
Okay.
So you exercise your vote on a policy.
Okay.
And, and that the vote was to the one when that resolution was passed. That's the policy that we exercise our vote. This is the mechanical aspect, aspects of passing that resolution.
Okay. Good thumbs up.
Yeah, it's not even tied to that resolution, just happens to be the fund balance, yeah.
But it.
Totally in accounting.
So Commissioner Edwards is keen on the line item 00.
I understand.
That's just one item. I mean, there might be other things. I'm not trying to scrutinize everything. It's just the reality of doing business, kind of what I'm hearing.
Right, this is an accounting function.
Okay, good enough, I'm good.
Yes, sir.
What is the, can we look at historic preservation for a moment?
Sure, can you tell me what that number?
Next to line, 1930, next to last on that sheet.
Thank you, yes.
274,000 is the fund balance. We had budgeted 2009.
I had estimated 209. We really have 274. That is because a lot of the projects that we thought would be completed at the time we prepared the budget were not. And you see those items in the carryforward package to ask permission to continue to spend the money.
And what is, remind me what the source of the historic preservation fund, where does it come from?
That is a recording fee, $1 on all recording documents that are recorded. There is one, $1 is part of the $5 historic preservation document recording fee. $1 of that comes into this fund.
And that generates every year some amount of.
Yes, which I could look up, but I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay, that's fine. I've got the, I'm sure in my binder somewhere, I've got the financial plan.
Yep, it's in the budget.
So thumbs up, Commissioner. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner.
Well, I think Commissioner Mahia had a question.
Yes, I'm still confused on the difference in the budget amendment amount parts. Could you please just go over that again?
Sure, so last August, every funded administrator estimated how much they thought the beginning fund balance would be on January 1 of this year. When we do, you know, when we do that, we're only partway through the year. It's a, it's an estimate. So then we finish the year and do the year closing, and we find out what the fund balance really is based on actual revenues and actual expenditures. So then the real fund balance is the amount in the first column. And the adjustment is just the difference between those two numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. All right, so all of that is, well, all of that is part of the maintenance package.
So it's all one, all in the same, we've already had a thumbs up on it, suppose it's being.
Pretty much, it is, but that particular list is what it is. And like I said, you could all vote no today, and the fund balance is, it's still be what they are.
Let me ask you a quick question, because I've been through this. I know this is my fifth or sixth time wondering where it is, and it never becomes clear to me. But as other jurisdictions, is this a similar function that takes place with other county governments as they move forward in their budget cycle? Maybe not to the same dollar amount or anything, but relatively the same action takes place?
It is my understanding that it is. The, the law states that the board, only Board of County Commissioners can make these kinds of adjustments. So it's not as if you could delegate. In our attorney's opinion, you couldn't delegate these functions to Romero or me. I don't know if other. Um, I don't know if other counties have decided that that is something they do and I know that um, I take a very proactive approach to keeping the board informed and involved. So I don't know what other counties do now. Alright, so maintenance, the first four pages is the fund adjustment, the numbers just don't show up because of the coding. Um, but on the last pa- item on page four, uh, in maintenance level, we are asking that you increase appropriation authority in the ERNR uh, operations fund to be able to pay the increased cost of fuel. That's a hundred and eighty-six thousand and then there is on top of page five, um, the second item in maintenance level is an increase in the medic one appropriation authority, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, mainly due to increased contract operating costs. So we ask that you approve all of that, but questions?
On uh, that line item, that line eighty on the fuel cost,
Uh-huh.
is that countywide, is that the whole countywide adjustment up because of the higher cost of fuel?
Yes, it is. Right, wholesale, yes, all of them.
So. Yeah, I mean, it's not just the sheriff's office or the, or the department.
It's not just Public Works, it it ERNR pays for fuel for all county vehicles. So that is the increase that we see in the cost of the funding. Alright, questions about maintenance?
The the only other question I have is, you said, you know, there aren't any numbers there, cause they'll show up.
That's that's why we gave you this list.
Those were. Okay.
There's a coding issue, technical, of why they don't show up in this report out of the system, but we give you a separate list to show.
And and like the medic one boost, that's seven fifty, that shows up somewhere else.
Shows up right here and then.
And again, that comes out of a completely different budget.
Medic one fund.
Okay, great.
Alright, maintenance, thumbs thumbs up, thumbs up?
I guess so.
Okay. Alright, the next item is the operating carry forward. Um, again, uh, as I've stated in other meetings, uh, we're doing this rollover thing for the first time, uh, we've always done carry forward for other funds. So I think that the budget office, uh, next time will probably combine these two items. Uh, but for now, in your package, it's separate. Operating carry forward is um, for projects in other funds that were started, but not completed. So the first item on this list is the historic preservation. I mean, right here you see the, there's twenty-three thousand dollars worth of projects that we thought were gonna be completed in twenty twenty-one, it didn't get finished, but they need authority to finish them this year. Um, so that carries forward and that's what all of these items are. Um, there's a carry forward for conservation futures. Uh, these are not the HCP projects, these are the um, preservation easements. Um, the equipment ERNR is equipment that didn't come in uh, timely and then the medic one. Uh, but right down the list, these are things that the board had already approved, that just didn't get finished last year.
If I had to guess on that number one item, it's that kiosk over at ballpark or something like that, didn't build or something?
That could be one of the items, I, we're working with them.
My question is, the reversions that we saw on the budget last year, did this have that included or is this gonna kinda take away from those reversions?
These are reversions in other funds, but but yeah, it it, these will impact the ending fund balance in these other funds.
Okay.
All other funds, lots of money in those funds, most of them, enough money to cover these. Other questions about the carry forward? Nope, thumbs up.
Okay.
One, two, three, four thumbs. Um, alright, rollover, rollover is the new thing that we told.
Tommy.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll try not to throw in too much.
Yeah. Gotta be in our minutes. Um, rollover is the new thing that we offered to offices and departments. Uh, it is basically what we said in the instructions is that if you have one-time items that for some reason were not completed in twenty twenty-one and you reverted the money uh, and it's not personnel savings, then you can request that the board authorize the money in twenty twenty-two so you can pay for the things that are gonna be completed this year, started last year, completed this year. And the prime example is equipment. Uh, as you're aware, we have supply chain issues with all kinds of things and so a number of our offices and departments ordered things that didn't get delivered by December thirty-one. And uh, accounting rules state that you cannot pay for something before you receive it. Um, so we couldn't pay for something in twenty twenty-one if it didn't get to us in twenty twenty-one and it doesn't matter if it's in transit, uh, if you don't have it in your hand, you can't pay for it uh, in that period, so um, many of these items, the vast majority are for items not received and the auditor says that they did not receive election supplies. By the end of the year, they'd ordered them, they didn't receive them. Uh, budget staff looked to see that the money was actually not spent. Um, so it did revert and they'd like to increase their authority to pay for it out of this year's budget.
In addition to that, on the two guys, Robin described, there was in the specific item for purchase, there were had in a specific dollar amount in two thousand twenty-one. So that is specifically item was not received, as Robin stated, so it has to be that specific item. They was included on the two thousand and twenty-one.
Right, it's not just general, please roll my money over, it, these are all for specific um, things or projects. So one of the things you see in here somewhere, I think, is training that didn't get done. Um, that due to capacity issues. So so there are a number, sometimes it's project, a lot of it is stuff. Um, the one item in this packet that didn't follow the rules, if you will, is line three for the sheriff. The sheriff uh, is requesting fifty-six thousand dollars to pay for equipment that was not received, but their equipment budget was fully spent and they are requesting to roll over unspent personnel costs to pay for this equipment in this year.
And so did we say yes?
Well, that is your decision right now, that's, and this is the time to make the decision.
And your decision. Well, I'm gonna say yes.
So my question is, like in in things like that, I know departments and offices have a little bit, if they have that flexibility to order. But in this case, the reason it doesn't really follow the policy or procedure is because they had already spent their.
Their equipment budget.
Their equipment budget, but they were using other savings to cover the.
Right.
Sal- salary savings.
Yeah, they were using salary savings.
That was.
I'm asking you.
And had it come, they would have been able to do that.
Yep, had it been received.
But also, but keep in mind, when we provided to you last time on the uh, projected uh, reversion for two thousand twenty-two, cor- correctly on wrong, that uh, they're expected to revert like seven hundred thousand on in the sheriff's.
This year, the sheriff uh, is currently projecting that they will revert six hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
No. So and that is, so they have capacity to cover this year, this particular expense.
If they're gonna be, well, that was last year.
Yep.
But you're saying if last, if this year follows last year, there would be capacity, right?
This this year, they are currently projecting this year that they will revert six hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Oh, this year, this year.
This year.
Can we have that sheet?
Yeah, yes, I gave you this sheet in our last meeting. This is how much each office and department is projecting after the first quarter.
So the variance is what they, it's expected to revert?
Revert. Yeah, and you see the the coroner is projecting that he would be overspent, which is why there's policy item.
Planning, three dollars.
Yeah, I'm taking a close look at planning, it's it's uh, I wonder about how their worksheets are calculated. It's generally not that type.
And uh, I I I'm not sorry, um, at least from a point of view of arguing against the the purchase of this equipment, that is not the conversation. Um, I uh, I think the conversation is, this is the only, maybe corrections as well.
No corrections had capacity in equipment.
Uh, okay, so it's uh, the um, one of the budget instructions for budget and then when the board authorized was um, uh, salary savings can all go over.
Right.
I have a question. But if we're, I guess, if we're applying that kind of same logic of you know, the reversion, I'm I'm just wondering on, you know, the auditor is asking for one hundred and fifty-three, but she's going to revert back two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So couldn't they just absorb that to you?
They certainly could and that is the board's prerogative to choose which of these you'll authorize, but again, you uh, chose to provide the opportunity with certain guidelines to offices and departments, this is the first time we're doing it. Um, so you could choose to not give increases to those that appear they can absorb the the cost. Um, but everyone else, like the auditor can show that she had more savings than this amount for their election supplies in their reverted money.
Are you asking a question for two offices in the sheriff's family?
No, I was just, I use the auditor as an example, that's what I did. It was the first line and it's the first, second line right there, so you can pick out, let's just use.
Okay.
Right, and the only reason that I'm picking out the sheriff's line for discussion is because they are the one and only, this is the only line that didn't follow the rules, if you will.
Commissioner Edwards, how are you getting there, just so I know your thought, since we had the.
Well, I I think that traditionally, they've always been underfunded, there's that almost seven hundred thousand that's gonna be returned. Yeah, it's a technical issue, maybe we're not, but I do look at law enforcement differently. There are so many crazy things going on. I've been there and uh, that's why, that's why I'm there. Uh, I'm I'm trying to make sure that we give adequate coverage to the needs of the individual officers.
So would the board like to go item by line item? And then exercise your prerogative?
Well, I'm probably gonna go along with every, everything else, but I'm gonna give the, and if the auditor, I I mean, I realized chair brought that up, if there's a situation like that, I'd probably entertain that as well. It isn't like uh, we didn't end up pretty flush in revenue, it was thirty-eight million or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just gonna agree to all of this and with the sheriff's line, I mean, it's the first time we're doing this, so if we can do it with the kind of admonition that, hey, we're recognizing this didn't like fit, so please refrain from that in the future, but in terms of this being the first pass, it's a small amount, we have good revenue, I'm just not, I'm just gonna approve this packet as it, as it's been laid out.
Yeah, I all agree with the whole packet too, I just, my thought process in it is just, you know, if they were able, they would have been able to use it if it wouldn't have been for, you know, kind of the situation where we are now.
Time.
Um, and so, um, since it's the first time we're doing this, yeah.
Yep, great, good, alright, I think that's good, alright, so thumbs up on the rollover packet, that's one.
So. Thumbs up.
Alright, policy, we will go line by line, um, the, so starting at the top, uh, the first item is two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars for the auditor uh, to uh, spend the interest earned on a grant that they deposited to the general fund that should not be used in any other way.
Okay, tell me again where we're at on that.
We are on the poli- policy packet, policy.
On the policy.
Line one.
Got it.
Auditor.
Got it.
And we're gonna go line item by line item.
Yep. We're gonna go line by line, now policy.
On this, we just went through that, but I think uh, discussion maybe worth it.
Yep, auditor, uh, they can't, we we the county cannot spend this interest in any other way. Needs to be fun uh, spent on election costs, so, yes. Yes, I see one thumb.
So, so is this coming from?
General fund.
General fund?
Yes. They deposited the grant into the general fund, they didn't spend the grant, the grant earned twenty-two hundred dollars in revenue that they'd like to spend on election costs.
Okay, so this is basically not our money anyways?
That's not really.
Okay.
Well, does that apply to everything on this short consulting?
No, it does not, which is why we're going line by line.
Okay, this is your money, the thing is, we cannot use brandy other purposes or bank connections.
Right, so you have to, the board controls the money, so, two, I see two thumbs, three thumbs, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'd just be calling Mary anyway to ask her how to deploy the money.
That's right. Uh, line two is twenty-two thousand dollars to cover um, flood costs, you don't see any revenue on this line, but later on you see, I think it's emergency services bringing in the revenue that covers this and a few other costs related to the flood, so.
So emergency services will cover this?
Yep, uh, through grant. So thumbs up, one, two, three, good.
Yeah.
Uh, line three is uh, law enforcement is requesting eighty-three hundred dollars uh, in each year to do extra background checks. Um, this is unanticipated, um, because of the issues no one ever expected to have these kind of issues with vacancies and hiring.
But this is a more wild investment by the sheriff.
Yes, so just under, just over eight thousand for, and thank you,
Good.
and an additional three thousand uh, for law enforcement um, for armored car pickups for daily deposits. So this is related to the move to the atrium. And the sheriff is saying that they need a secure way of getting money. Today, they don't need an armored car service, uh, because the treasurer is on campus, but when the treasurer moves to the atrium, they're going to need to hire armored car to take the money that they receive on a daily basis to the treasurer. Um, we're having conversations with the treasurer about if there's not a countywide solution.
Yeah. So the, and also the clerk also has the needs of armored car. Um, this particular request is to let an an a, an additional stop after the treasurer moves to the three thousand Pacific. And um, and because the sheriff's office needs that, they need to send the cash, deposit the cut within a day.
Right.
So an additional stop is needed.
Right.
We look for many different options, uh, uh, look for uh, building a secure box, your deposit box and and everything else. It became a logistically uh, challenge, Jen, to do that, so this is the probably the best. It became a logistically uh, challenge, Jen, to do that, so this is the probably the best approach that we can do in order to really need uh, meet the needs of depositing the the money on a twenty-four hour basis.
I have a question, everyone knows, that's a question, I, my question is, you said, you mentioned the clerk needs this too, so will this cost cover both the sheriff, the clerk, and whoever else needs it?
No, this is just for the sheriff's office.
The clerk's office has their own, their own uh, contract for their armored car, that's.
They. Yeah. They currently have a separate contract, because they.
That's a change.
Why are we using the same one, I mean, it's.
Well, and the treasurer has a contract too, which is why Romero's saying, you know, we've, we've started talking about, isn't there a countywide solution? But at this time, this seems to be the best way to go.
Who's got the authority to make that decision?
You do, Commissioner.
About the whole thing?
Yes.
Oh, then let's just make it, but why don't we just say use one armored car?
Well, but I, but I but I think we, maybe a maybe a conversation.
Need a little negotiating.
Maybe a conversation, if that is the direction of conversation on the upcoming budget adjustment.
What, do we have one outfit likes one armored car service better than the other guys?
No, I think it will be worth to uh.
Somebody's brother is involved in it.
Come in a conversation with the treasurer, the sheriff, and the clerk office, how we can consolidate the services, and that's that's, that's probably what we may need to do, I don't, I I suggest the board not to give that direction at this point without having all the details associated with.
But you're gonna, you're gonna fix this problem?
We'll also need to talk to court.
Well, we.
This is one of your hot potatoes?
We, we have asked to make this a topic at the financial management committee, so, I've asked for it to be a topic there.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's a good objective, it was time to come up with something.
Okay, so do we vote on it or no, or yes or?
So you can say yes or no to this, this very small amount.
To this, I line item.
I know, but I'm kinda with the chair here, why don't we consolidate it?
I I'm with you on that, but if there's gonna be a solution on that, like, for me, it's, why are we having different outfits, right? Drive to one same spot and be doing the same rounds that are needed.
Yeah, that's, that's so dumb, I can't tolerate it almost.
This is in flux, why can't we just not approve this, and we can pick them up in the second budget amendment for whatever the solution is that we.
That's absolutely your option. Yes.
Like, why don't we need to do this when we don't know what we're doing?
That's your option, absolutely. I think that that's just fine.
Thumbs down on.
Well, I mean, we'll we'll get it solved for the sheriff.
Absolutely, okay, we just don't know how we're solving it.
The vice chair came up with the solution, that's good for me.
Okay, so.
Okay, so this is a thumbs down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, so this one's enough, um.
I'm hoping we'll come across the same kind of a thing for the clerk or for the treasurer.
So the clerk is is not asking for an additional one, because they already have a contract.
Right, and other uh, offices and departments that will remain on campus perhaps have about that far ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, can't the treasurer include like the sheriff and whoever needs to go to his office in the contract, I just,
um.
I I I'm really struggling to see.
We're having a conversation about it, yep, we're, we're, we're talking about it. Um, number five is the correction side of the background checks. Thumbs, thumbs up, yep, good, um. Line six on page two is uh, from the coroner, he would like authority in twenty twenty-three to include his, all his new equipment that he just purchased in the ERNR rates. Uh, and you see the ERNR side of this transaction further on. So, I'm gonna name it yes, so that we have savings to replace it when the time comes. Uh, line seven is the coroner, as we uh, talked about earlier, uh, the coroner is projecting to be significantly overspent. This is the result of um, the continuing need for uh, hiring someone to do autopsies. Uh, you see a little bit of revenue because the state reimburses the county for a portion of autopsy expenses, uh, as you know, the coroner is working on hiring a forensic uh, pathologist, but that hasn't happened yet, and so he's got this big hole in his budget.
I I'm, I'm wanting to know why we can't take that amount of money, I'm not, not arguing that he needs it, but can't, why can't we take that funding out of the settlement money from the uh, opioid business or something? Because that's what's driving all this, is fentanyl, fentanyl, opioid and all that, I mean, we're just having a heck of a number of people dying from that, and that is driving this cost, so.
It might have revenue from that settlement, I would say that that would be a very good use of that money.
Do we know anymore about that? I've heard that we've got settlements and stuff.
Yeah, they 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 stayed uh, settled on the, settled on the lawsuit, and there's some revenue going to the state, but they have not materialized what they want to.
Well, didn't our own prosecutor have something figured out as well, or was he piggybacking on the attorney?
Yeah, yeah, so, but the thing is, we have not received any money out of that sum.
Okay, well, when the time comes, can we do that, can we get it, can we replace it or something, make sure we don't let that slip, because.
Any notice.
No, we will, we won't let you know when we receive the money, for sure.
Right. Yep, and if at that time you'd like to direct it to cover this cost, that will be your prerogative.
Okay.
So.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, um, I spoke with the coroner, you're open, give me a look, I was like, oh yeah, that's right. So I spoke with the coroner, had my uh, monthly check-in with him uh, on Monday, and one of the things we talked about, the possibility of doing with this four fifty is maybe a hundred thousand of that uh, be used, uh, he's gonna be using a recruiter um, to see, and if the recruiter comes back and says, you know, it's, it's not enough money, then he could use that a hundred thousand dollars to, you know, help with the pay, uh, because I know that's been a big part on um, why it it's been a struggle to hire, especially in this market right now, so just giving him that authority um, to be able to use a hundred thousand out of the four fifty to, to supplement the pay for the pathologist that we approved last year. Um, and he was very supportive of that, so I'm putting that proposal up for the board as well.
Do we need to do something about that, or?
I I don't think that you do need to do anything specific, if the board should authorize this four hundred and fifty thousand, then the coroner could use it um, to pay for autopsies or for uh, uh, increase salary for that position, should it be determined.
It's all related, it's all related to salary, so, I I don't believe you need to do anything in particular related to that, uh, if there is an opportunity,
Right.
Okay.
if the recruiter determines that perhaps the, the salary range of the pathologist is off market, um, you need to take action to increase that, on that classification anyways.
Right.
Down the road.
So we could put a statement uh, in the budget saying that the uh, coroner is authorized to increase
Yeah.
the salary for the position in consultation with HR and the board.
Yeah, be- because the board needs to authorize that, they 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 uh, the coroner nor any of us have the latitude to just increase the salary of any position without the concurrence of the board.
Yeah. Right.
So, that actually needs to be taken by you anyways.
Right, but we could put an affirmative statement in the budget.
Okay, just to make it clear.
Alright, so thumbs up to cover the cost for the coroner. Very good. Uh, line eight is non-departmental, uh, this is thirty-five thousand dollars for the need to packing plan study in coordination with Pierce County. Two thumbs, three thumbs up, thank you, line nine is ten thousand dollars uh, for participation in the Chehalis Basin partnership. One, two, three, thank you, uh, line ten is twenty-five hundred dollars, it comes with revenue. The revenue is interdepartmental, um, but regardless, it does come with revenue, it is to increase funding for WSU Extension Water Resources and Native Plains Outbridge, they were not aware of this at the time of the budget passed.
The revenue is coming?
There is revenue noted here, I have to.
So that's it's, there's a twenty-five hundred dollar revenue?
Yes, and it's an inter-fund agreement, so it's an increase in transfer, I think from tipping fees in public works. That's where the revenue is from.
Okay.
It says general fund.
So this is the you, this is the word, use of the word inter-fund in a different, has a different meaning than when we're talking about Lake Management Districts?
Inter-fund costs, yeah, yeah, this is, this is just between, between funds.
I just wanna clarify that, because if I understand, that this has nothing to do with that.
That's correct. So are you okay with the increase, and everybody's okay? There is more than enough tipping fees and it is an allowable cost. Um, line eleven is for the victim advocate program. Uh, the state is reducing grant funding for the Stop Violence Against Women grant. Um. Usually you would see a corresponding decrease in expenditures when a grant is going away. However, what we have discovered is that this fund has a substantial fund balance because there was a change in the way that court fees connected to certain cases is collected and shared between the state and the county. And the county is able to retain significantly more than we were able to in the past. I think that the change happened, I wanna say in twenty twenty, but it might have been twenty nineteen was the legislative change. Money has been building up in this fund, so there is more than enough money to continue to pay for the FTE out of fund, the fund, the revenue to the fund that used to be paid for by the grant.
This is welcome news because that fund was
Always a problem.
Always right on the, about the red line. So uh, this is really a welcome news because the any fund dollars are surprisingly higher than us.
Yes.
That's an ongoing thing?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Uh, is, there was some report that had to be made to Labor and Industries that we were meeting certain criteria, that was done long ago. Uh, with budget, uh, staff work with finance staff in prosecutor's office to find a copy that got reported, but submitted, and we are going to continue, it it doesn't have a sunset date or, so money coming in.
Great, yeah, that was a squeak a couple years ago.
Yeah, this fund has been a problem for a long time, and now it's not, surprisingly, so thumbs up on this line. Good. Uh, line twelve is for the uh, roads and transportation, they are requesting authority for an additional million dollars. Uh, it is part of flood response. This is out of the road and transportation, uh, these are costs that were already incurred in response to the January twenty twenty flood event. We don't have the revenue yet, but we have just gotten authority to claim at least part of it from FEMA. Uh, that is new news, unless.
And and when you say part of a, part of a million dollars, what does that mean?
No, because FEMA covers a certain percentage of their response.
FEMA usually covers seventy-five percent of overtime costs, possibly not everything here will be uh, eligible to be claimed. And that which is claimed requires a match, the state traditionally contributes twelve and a half percent match to FEMA emergency awards, we don't know if the state is doing that this time, but we're gonna get some of that.
Can we get any money for that Green Cove project?
The Green Cove project?
The culvert?
Oh, no.
Cove, culvert, I heard of.
Is that due to this flooding event?
Well, it had, they said the high pressure going through the kind of pipe.
Is is listed here, is listed here, as part of the million dollars.
Huh? Oh yeah, but it's not enough, we need more.
We need eighty-eight billion.
Well, now you.
FEMA. Yeah, why can't we put, why can't we put in more?
Point eight, please.
And we can certainly.
I don't know why we don't ask on these.
Well, yeah, for that, FEMA is funny about funding infrastructure projects, we can certainly ask.
Well, but it doesn't hurt.
It's not highly likely.
The the decision for this is a re- reimbursement basis, so the the county has to spend the money,
Well.
and they take the risk whether FEMA like to reimburse them.
You mean there's no assurance you ever get money from?
That is absolutely correct, no assurance from FEMA.
Absolutely correct. Oh really, you have to do it first and just.
Yeah, they they they, FEMA never gives the money ahead of time, you need to incur the expenditures
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
related to an emergency, and then submit for reimbursement.
Okay, well, let's at least, whatever we do, put in for, when we get done.
Yay.
And that depends on.
We will be, we will be applying for those items that are considered eligible.
Whatever the cost is.
I don't remember the timing of the culvert fail, but.
It was around that time, because that's what happened, the the the, it crushed down.
That's why.
The uh, culvert crushed down, and therefore they, that's why they had to do the emergency one.
Insert.
And then the continued floods just like left, like it became kind of a landslide thing, so it just.
Back up, the high hydraulic pressure.
So one of the first things that FEMA will look at is the precondition prior to the flood.
So the.
It was fine.
So if you're saying that if the flood, if the flood didn't cause the co- collapse, but then, once the collapse happened, the flooding increased the damage, is that what you're saying?
Well, well then, the, so first you have to show FEMA what the condition of the asset was prior to the event. So, and then the next thing is that FEMA will only reimburse improvements to get it back to that state
To the, to the delta.
immediately prior to the event, they won't pay for a whole new.
To the, to the. For the delta.
Felver.
That's gonna be a problem then.
Well, that's FEMA, FEMA is not, we could, we should certainly look at it, but it is highly unlikely.
But we will.
Because.
Get it back to the status though, of what it was, cost six point eight million, I mean, I would be willing to pay.
Well, but even there, I mean, the, like, this, the previous status quo is not one of the options we're presenting, because everyone's acknowledging the culvert was insufficient. You know, like, at at a minute, the closest thing to what it was is a bigger culvert, a box, a bigger box with a bottom, with no bottom or whatever.
Right.
Like, that's the closest to pre, but even that, I don't know how carefully they scrutinize the differences.
Oh, extremely, and if they consider your project an improvement, they are out.
Will they go, oh, you had a six in, you had a six. So if they say you had a three-foot culvert, now you replace it with a six-foot culvert?
That's an improvement and they are out, your project is almost automatically.
Because they they they, the options they heard last week, on the, on uh, replacing the culvert is for fish passage.
But we can't go back to what it was, there's, that's not even an option.
Right, well, I don't think FEMA funding is an option, but here's, here's the cost of flood response. Will you approve this appropriation increase for Public Works?
Will we get this money reimbursed, the one million?
Maybe, maybe you'll see some of it, we will claim as much as we can.
Thumbs. Wait, this is to do something next year, this year?
No, this is already occurred, this is their response to Public Works.
No, this is for this year. Since twenty-two.
They just want to be backfilled the money they spent.
They, no, you you, you need to authorize the, the, actually, the uh, the appropriations.
Yeah. The spending, or else they'll have to reduce spending elsewhere to have covered this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Two, three thumbs, thank you. Alright, top of page four, um, Parks and Trails Fund, Public Works is uh, requesting forty-two thousand dollars for Neshoots Falls Walkway and Viewing Platform. Uh, the project is costing more than had been anticipated at the time the budget was made, this is not unusual in our capital projects at this time. And the funding will um, come from REIT.
I think we call it REIT.
Partially REIT and partially Park Impact Funds.
Why are we, why, where's the revenue?
The revenue is from uh, REIT two and Park Impact Funds. We'll transfer the money into the Parks Fund, and then they'll pay for the project out of that fund.
Does somewhere else there be a reduction in the Park Impact fee?
Right, you'll see, you'll see an expenditure to create the revenue into here.
It's not revenue, it's shit thing.
I see it as a transfer, but our accounting rules from state auditor say that they're expenditures or revenue, so that's how you see it presented in the documents. I I I argued that for a couple of years when I was new here and totally lost.
Well, they can call, they can make us call it whatever they want, but in my head, I have to keep those things separate.
It's a transfer. Yeah, I agree.
They can make it hard for me to do that, but I'm still gonna do it, so.
Yep. Alright, so thumbs up to this item.
I'm ready.
Uh line fourteen is half a million dollars um to
We did that yesterday.
Well, you we all discussed it yesterday, we added it to your packet, so a half million increase in conservation futures.
We discussed that.
But just because you didn't make a decision yesterday because that was under executive session, so uh but this is related
No, we
Right.
No, we're doing it today.
It's related to that, it's
Right, okay.
Alright, yep, good. Um line fifteen is the uh social services increase in um
Rescue Home Fund.
Yes, it's the brand new fund. Um so this is the uh estimate of the revenue that we're going to bring in uh one point five million this year and four point eight million next year. Uh they're anticipating spending enough to get it up and running, mainly staff costs this year and actually start to get projects on the street next year. This was a request in the budget, but that was um uh premature, so it is coming to you now.
Could be replying.
Yep.
And um in two thousand and twenty three may be a revision to have four point eight because we will get a revenue from the city of Olympia after the board approves the in local agreement to bring their own home fund into the
Right, we'll also get a little experience in what we're actually collecting, these are estimates. Yes, sure.
So is this a position we're gonna hire? I you know, we just went through the retreat and there was absolutely no decision about what decisions to hire or what to do with the home fund, so I'm just wondering, is this premature still?
No, this is just the budget authority, you don't create an you're not creating a position right now. This is just the authority to have the opportunity to create a position. I have a conversation with Tom about this and I can probably work in with detail.
I think that there is a position included, there's no authority to hire it this time.
But it's not Yeah, but it's not funded by this.
I think there is, we'll have to look at position control.
Because Because it's more than just one position to support the home fund. And uh we will be bringing that uh to the Regional Housing Council, especially to
Jennifer.
They um
Somebody's got their handle.
J Jennifer might have information on this, go ahead, Jennifer.
This does it, this request does include a position, the intention is to hire the position in September. This is from the original request that had a position in it as well.
Can you start from the beginning, we didn't hear the
Oh, so this does include a position. It includes the same position that was requested when it was originally put in in the budget last year. They uh they plan for the position to begin in September, but it doesn't include a position this year and there is um that's part of the resolution as well.
So so Jennifer, what type of position is it, can you see what the title is? What class?
Um I believe it's a social service, I'll have to look that up for looks like it actually has some of that.
It's a social service, it's basically two.
Okay, uh Romero's got it.
Okay.
So this does create a position, it does not give the authority to hire
My bad, my bad.
and the board could adjust the type of position should you see fit in the future.
The R H C retreat, uh like I believe it was in our legislative resolution that we were gonna create like a director position for the R H C, is that moving forward or?
I
Or is that the one that you're saying there's no agreement about?
There was no discussion about it.
No.
Yeah.
But Tom and I are gonna be bringing a proposal to the R H C to be in concert uh in alignment with that right with the ordinance.
I'm surprised because Lacy was really a cheerleader for that when we were back, when we were working through the details of the right thing.
Me. So this social service position, this program is going to need a program manager.
I understand that, but I I mean, I just for me, it's we don't even know what we're gonna do with the funds yet, like there was absolutely, you know, and we gave authority to the R H C to come up with the products and the R H C had absolutely no discussion about this. So besides long term and what we want long term the R H C to become, there's there was no discussion on the positions that we need, right? Because supposedly these positions are gonna be kind of the conduit for the R H C and
Support staff, support the program, ensure that we're doing our due diligence when it comes to the money, um
And the support, yeah.
Yes. I share your frustration uh uh commissioner, because in the retreat, we didn't even touch that that and at least that was probably right wrong or different, my expectation that we get into the level of detail of the structure of the uh of the uh uh of the R H C related to the home fund. So this afternoon on your agenda, as you know, we have that in a local agreement, it's part of the conversation. And uh because I will be asking uh the R H C to open that in a local agreement to work on the structure. And I have already had initial needs with Tom, because we're gonna have to bring a proposal to the R H C because I that's the obligation that I have to be responsive to the ordinance that you passed related to the home fund. So that is coming, what you're doing here with this is allow the the budget authority to exercise whatever options.
Right.
Do doesn't Olympia have a home fund, program manager?
Yeah, all that, uh and again, all that needs to be blended into the whole conversation with the in local agreement, yeah.
I think that that person could probably easily guide you in terms of what's what's required, what's the hours, what are the skill sets.
Yeah, so all that is part of the whole uh proposal that I'm working on to bring it to the R H C.
So so bringing it back to this particular item, the next opportunity you would have to add money to their budget to do this is December. So all this does is create capacity, you're not giving authority to hire that there's a different hiring process that they'd have to go through to be able to fill the position. All you're doing is creating it so that it's there when the time comes.
In the in the one I did, I'm sorry.
So we need someone to manage the money, it's coming in, we need someone to manage the money.
Some some point I got it.
Yeah, it's a hundred ninety seven thousand budget authority. I think it will be enough to to implement the larger administrative arm of the R H C because uh it it will be probably the last two, three months of the year that we will see some expenditures spending. It's just creating the 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 expenditure capacity.
Is this about accounting person? Like in on our side of the ledger, not, you know, we're not talking about this R H C person.
Well, they they the R H C, they have to be accounting.
Oh, they're gonna be accounting.
Has to be a county, because they
Okay, so we are talking about the same.
Yeah, they because they
County is responsible for the money.
Yeah, because the R R H C is not a fiduciary independent
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
organization, although they
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're tied about the same.
Yeah.
So this is not an accountant, this would be someone who's a program manager, but our program managers have some responsibility to manage the funding that they're responsible for.
It is a program manager, administrative support, accounting support. All that is part of the package that will be presented to the R H C that eventually is gonna be common as a recommendation to the board.
Sure.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh this kind of puts a little bit of a different spin on it for me for a different reason. Uh there were numerous reasons I didn't support the conaction of this home fund tax. And I kind of feel I'm throwing a wrench in things now because I mean, I'm I'm in a position where at some point, I'm probably once we get a plan, because that was part of my problem, we didn't have a plan when we moved forward with this. We still don't have a plan and I still can't vote for it, so that's gonna be a no vote. And I don't, I think that probably causes a problem from maybe the chair, I don't know that because I'm if if you were to do the same thing, we'd be out of luck on moving forward, so I'm I'm concerned about that. I'm a realist, but until we get a plan, I can't vote for it, so I just wanna make sure I say that upfront before
And that's your prerogative.
Yeah, and and at some point, we're gonna get to the point, we have a plan and we've got
So
But the revenue is coming.
The funding. Yeah, it's coming regardless, I know that, but
Wait, the revenue is coming, you you do what?
You're right, I mean
I just can't vote for it without plan.
And uh whether you don't authorize the expenditures, that's absolutely within the
Well, I just wanted to point out kind of where I'm at.
Right, it all that that will mean is you cannot spend, they won't have this hundred almost two hundred thousand to spend available to them. And if they don't spend it, it'll revert back
To the fund.
To the fund. It'll revert to the fund, this fund, the housing fund.
I do have a question, you made a statement that kind of throws me off is that we're not gonna have another opportunity until December, you said, which
December is your second amendment of the year.
And and if um let's play this out, if I bring a proposal to the R H C the R H C recommends whatever makeup of new positions will be to the board. The board approves those positions, but if we don't have a budget authority, those will not be implemented until next year.
Can I ask a a question though, like how long does it take, if the I L A is open, right, how long does that take? Uh between just because the I L A for the home fund for, you know, between the county and Olympia is still you know, you're still working on it, right? So for to open it up realistically, right, for all of the jurisdictions again, how long is that going to take? And is that going to be long enough where, you know, December is gonna come around and we're gonna be closing it, like what what's the timeline on that?
Well, good question, I I cannot attest to the fact that's how we will take the individual jurisdictions to look at the in local agreement. From the from the staff point of view, we'll we'll make those recommendations as soon as possible because that's gonna be my recommendation again this afternoon. But I cannot give you a time, it is gonna be done in a month or two, because the city of Olympia, based in Tonwater, they have to go through the due diligence as well.
I just feel like there's gonna be a lot of conversation and discussion about in the R H C about what positions should, you know, the R H C fund with the home fund. Um and they're all gonna be county positions, I understand that just because of, you know, how the R H C stands, but
What's your issue though with having this budget authority just there in case it gets sorted out, I don't really understand.
For me, it's just premature, like
Well, it's kind of like the it's kind of like with the H C P, it's like I think we should have preauthorized some of that money because we knew that land acquisitions were coming. You could say it's premature, why do that? But now we're learning why we should have done that, because here's a land acquisition and budget amendments only come once or twice a year and we need to move and it's gonna be the same thing with this. Maybe they don't get this worked out and it all blows up and the money doesn't get spent, but chances are you guys are gonna work it out and we're gonna need to get that staffing going and the authority needs to be there, is my way of looking at it.
It's just the budget authority, if 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 the plan it takes until next year the hundred ninety seven thousand will like will go by to the N F O dollars of this fund. Will not be spent.
Won't be spent until you justify the until the board justifies justifies a position to be having.
You need to create those positions.
That will be part of the budget amendment resolution, there is position control is one of the attachments. I just wanna be very clear, so this does create the position.
But no, what I'm saying is more positions than they than only one list that there's coming.
Right, this this is the only one that would be created as part of this action and it does not give hiring authority.
So what's the pleasure of the board?
I have one thumbs down, I have one thumbs up, two thumbs up, alright. Uh that was a very good discussion. Um my page five, line sixteen is historic preservation.
Here's your kiosk.
This is the six thousand for the kiosk at the rack.
And the kiosk, you should do it.
Thumbs up, up.
It's just a, I don't even know much about this, I think I missed the briefing on the hospital when you talked about it, what is the deal there?
They they request additional appropriation to build a kiosk at the rack.
Did we already approve this project, it's just like cost increase or something?
Yeah, you you
Yeah.
Yep.
This is just the 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 budget authority.
Um here the line seventeen, here you see the uh the transfer side out of the parks fee for Deschutes. And line eighteen is the transfer out of the uh REIT two for Deschutes. And then line nineteen is um an increase in the E R N R um for replacements that were not expected um due to two vehicles being totaled. And they need to be replaced now, instead of in the future, there is enough money in the fund to cover it, but we need appropriation authority to buy them.
Accident?
Surprise.
We we saw once
Yes.
We saw one, it was that.
Me and I saw it, totally total Public Works vehicle, we're like, what happened here, pretty bad.
Where at?
Over at the
Over at the
With rodeo.
Oh.
So one was a sheriff's vehicle and the others was a public works vehicle. So
Thumbs up.
Is this a normal process for this?
It is, yeah. Alright, great, so there's all the policies, that is the budget amendment. We have direction on that.
And next we're going to face two, correct?
Now, this is part two of the meeting.
Yes.
So I'm going to bring up on the screen sure my battery is sufficient. You wanna take a short break before we do this?
Do you do it, can we?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Till ten thirty, just that one second.
Oh, thank you.
And
I'm sorry.
It is ten thirty two and Robin, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So for the rest of the time we have, about half an hour, um, we're gonna look at the forecast in an interactive way and run some what-if scenarios. And as we said at the beginning, there are no decisions being asked of you at this time. This is just to give you a sense of what might the forecast look like given any scenario that you should want to look at. So this is what what you have on the screen is a version of what you have in your packet. This is the latest forecast. It includes budget amendments. It does not include the um effects of the agreement that you just made with sheriff.
Sheriff's minute.
Deputy. The paper.
Okay. Okay, got it. Okay.
Yep. Um, you also have in that same set a a picture of the graph. And I why don't I, um.
And it's marked draft, right?
Uh, yes, yes, it is. Uh, this also is a draft and it matches the forecast in front of you. And I do not know why it likes to mess with size when it's on this screen. Um, but it looks like this.
Can we include this? I guess I'm moving ahead already when I say next.
We're about to. Yep. So that's the, this is where we're at. Uh, it includes the budget amendments, uh, decision you made include just about everything. So it's a very small change, not enough to worry about in the things. And this budget includes an assumption of two and a half percent per year for every year in the forecast, two and a half percent COLA. Here's what we're about to change. Uh, you know that yesterday you passed a resolution uh that reflects the agreement made with sheriff deputies. And it is three point four percent uh in twenty twenty two, four point one percent in twenty twenty three and a one-time five thousand dollar bonus for those ninety employees that are part of that bargaining unit. That updates the salary line right here and I've added, that's the yellow line. And I've added a line just below that to reflect the cost of the bonus. And here's the impact on the graph. Not a big impact because we really were only talking about the difference between two and a half percent to to the higher percentages that were agreed on and the one-time impact of the uh bonus for only ninety employees.
That's the sheriff, that's just the sheriff?
That is with just the sheriff.
I'd say that's a pretty significant impact if you look at, um, you know.
The curve there, yeah.
These years versus how it takes you down closer to the um to the blue line.
Are you talking about twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight?
Yeah, if if bring, yes, twenty seven and twenty eight.
Yeah, twen-, you know, just twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, that little window is pretty significantly impacted.
You have this, you have.
I know, but you know what? I took it home last night to work with it and it is uh in my car.
Okay, good. I'm I'm happy to give you this.
Thank you.
Your welcome. Um, so let's say, this is where we start to get in the what ifs. Let's say, just to see what it does, you've not settled with the correction deputies yet. Let's say they settle for the same thing. What does that look like? So three point, whoops, three point four percent. No, not not three hundred forty percent. That'll break us in a heartbeat.
Yeah, I can go.
What is my worksheet doing? Copy. Okay. Percent and a five thousand dollar bonus. Um, now the graph looks like this. Where in twenty seven and twenty eight you are hugging the target two-month reserve amount. And remember, with more spending, the target goes up a little. Um, but still well above the twelve thousand cash flow needs.
That's just the sheriff's office.
That is the sheriff and corrections only. So this is where I ask you, what would you like to fill in? Because this is an interactive conversation. What would you like to fill in for the other thousand employees in the county?
Keep in mind, the um if you see the N F N balance for this year, perhaps next year, there is capacity for that one time.
You got a good bonuses is what basically what you're seeing.
Uh, it's capacity for one time. So uh whether it's a one-time bonus to the rest of employees, that is something that we can work within the models, see what it does.
So so what would you suggest we put in?
Then and let's let's consider
Other things that I want you to.
Let uh just for the numbers purposes, if we put a two thousand dollar bonus for all county units.
In which year would you like to do?
Two thousand and twenty two.
This year. The impact, the impact is it brings the curve down.
Yeah. There really is not an impact on the outer years. It's the same. It's because the impact's on this year.
Uh, the impact is it on that year and then the rest of the curve just comes down.
So that, you know.
That's what the the standard two and a half percent COLA.
Two and a half percent.
But a two thousand dollar one-time bonus.
Let me adjust this. Because only about half of those employees would be um.
General fund. That is important. Yeah.
Right. So let me divide that by two.
But do the other funds have enough capacity to make it work for them?
Plenty.
Fairly confident, but we have.
I mean, they 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 the two if the bonus, if that is the direction, you know, can be come from the general fund. So that's have an impact. And the cost of living, all the bu-, whatever you want to do it, I think is is practical.
Right. So it's still in the out years, you come down below the target for a couple of years, but overall looks like you're.
But that is if the corrections get sustained. If they negotiate for the same.
Right.
Thing that the sheriffs.
If if they're listening.
And it's highly likely. Um, but what would, and again, here's what would happen if all employees got a four point one percent increase in twenty twenty three. Did that work?
I'm like, it's around the same. Oh, you have it still at five hundred and four.
Right, because only only uh we're only showing the general fund. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh.
It doesn't, it seems around the same, Robin.
It does look like around the same, which is why I'm double checking that my formulas are all working. Um, because it should be
It should come down.
significantly less.
Are are we gonna get our estimate on how much we're gonna
In theory.
The cost of rebuilding this complex is pretty quick. Is that coming up? The courthouse complex here, the remodel. We got something company annoying.
We're chances touring with the uh the architects, so working with the stakeholders.
Now it now it.
I thought we had something in there.
No, you you before got in the budget of fifty million dollar.
You say it's kind of backwards. We have a budget and we gotta do, we can do with the money we've got. Can't spend what we don't have.
So there's there's. No, we are far from getting into a a a an estimate of what is it we're going to.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm just wondering, we don't, we're talking about money. How much money is there to make everything work?
Right. And there's. You can't use the REIT money for COLAs.
No, 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 I know that.
Right. And I will very soon, like in the next few weeks, be talking to you about bonds. But uh, yeah, that money is not available for these. So this is what happens if you give everybody a four point one percent next year.
And a two and a two thousand dollar bonus.
And it's a big impact because it's so many employees. When it's just the uh sheriffs, you're only sheriffs and corrections, you're only talking about two hundred employees. But this is the other five hundred uh added on top of that in the general fund.
How about a a three point four percent?
In the second year?
Yeah, instead of four point one.
It's a little better.
I'd be a little bit more comfortable there.
Again, no decisions being made, just looking at what the impact is at this time, based on current assumptions.
And and just for budget services, can you add a bonus on three thousand ones?
Three thousand dollar bonus.
Uh, just look at scenarios here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Without without the formula, twenty twenty three.
Uh, with no change in.
They're not two and a half in twenty twenty. Let's say three in twenty twenty three.
Three in twenty twenty three. So here's, it's a little different, not a lot.
A little bit better.
It's it's anything above two and a half percent is gonna impact the future years when you do it for so many employees. Um, the here's something I'm just gonna throw out because it's something that's available to you. Uh, we have three million dollars in our whole lost revenue that can be spent for any legal purpose. It really needs to be a one-time deal. Um, but I have not reflected that money anywhere in the budget yet. That is still in your pocket.
So that would serve for the one-time bonuses that were.
You could certainly use a piece of it for that.
Yeah, yeah. And that will uh uh that will help. So if you since this does not include the three million dollars of the last revenue, can you take the three thousand uh on model just here?
But let's just put the revenue in.
Okay.
Um, and let's put in enough to cover the bonuses. So let's add uh one and a half billion.
Uh, that's assuming the three thousand dollar bonus.
Yeah, and it we put that in this year.
It's better.
Brings it up a bit.
Better.
So in the long run, you're projecting that by twenty thirty, you will have come back up to that target. Or we could use a little more of the three million, but this this is a good use of it. It's a one-time use. It's used for uh
So how much are you using now?
Bit of a retention purpose.
About three.
One and a half.
Uh, one and a half, I laid in.
That will give the board um the capacity, the option to use the other one and a half or the folder.
Other other things that should come up that you're interested in. Yep, one-time items.
For one time.
Would you like to look at any other scenarios?
So this is with the three thousand, three percent.
A three thousand bonus this year for everybody uh other than sheriff deputies and correction deputies. All other employees would get three thousand dollars. It's the impact on the general fund. And it has a three percent COLA in twenty twenty three.
How are we doing on sales tax revenue?
Sales tax revenue, I don't have the numbers for this month yet. But as of the end of April, we were at a seven percent year-over-year growth. Um, so that's a little less than what we thought we would get. And I factored that into this forecast, a reduction in sales tax revenue. It's already been factored in. Other things you might like to look at. And again, we can lay in any amount in any of these years.
Any other scenarios that you would like to see?
If everybody got exactly what the.
The five thousand, yeah, that's what I was about to ask.
Yeah, and well, let's look at just that change for now.
Were you showing us?
Back down. This is if everybody got a five thousand dollar bonus this year.
Can you put in a scenario where every county employee gets basically what the sheriff deputies got?
Yes. Three point four percent this year, four point one percent next year and a five thousand dollar bonus for everyone.
That's rough. So it's good to go first, I guess.
That's rough.
Anyway, so that gives you, you know, uh a perspective where we are. And uh, but I think the silver lining is there is capacity to um do something and that will be part of the negotiations that we'll go through. that we'll go through. Today this year.
One more corrections negotiations behind us. Here.
Things coming up next week. Yeah, I think it's next week. It's coming up. Uh, hopefully a final meeting.
Okay, Commissioners, questions? Comments?
Nope, we're going to be leaving at 11:00.
Okay, with that, thank you, Robin.
All right, you're adjourned.